Good evening and welcome to our Tuesday, August twenty sixth, meeting of the Buckland Select Board. It is five P M. We will move right into our first agenda item. We have the tax collector position. Interviews were conducted and we have a recommendation of the Personnel Committee and a letter of hire. Would you like to?
Sure.
A bit more with that?
I can. So Larry Wells was actually on the Personnel Committee, but in his absence, I was also at the meeting where we interviewed two candidates for the position of tax collector. The person that the Personnel Committee had decided to move forward, I've included her resume in your packet so you could look through. It's Quinn Cusimano. She is an individual who is very interested and motivated in learning more about the position. She lives locally. She has very good availability. She's very excited to learn. Has some good background in computers and assured us that she's a very quick learner, which as you know is really important because we have an immediate opening. So it sounds like her scheduling, she has a young son who's starting preschool, so she's gonna have availability during the day. We're just gonna have to figure out a good schedule for her if you decide that this is the person that you're willing to take our recommendation for in hiring.
And we're not meeting the person?
Um, you could meet the person. We're just on a very fast track, so I wasn't sure how that. I talked to Clint a little bit about it, so we, I'm ha- absolutely, we can bring her in to meet you, for sure. We just are, it's such a tight schedule to get her in, in the seat because Kara, as you know, is gone, so.
Well, she's gonna help train her though, right?
She is. She is going to try to figure out the timing and hopefully it will be even this week.
Well, I like what she wrote in the letter here where she said, "I understand the importance of confidentiality and public trust in the position." And that's, that's very important, you know, and sometimes this position can deal with difficult situations.
Mm-hmm, and that was definitely the questioning that we asked of, of both candidates was, how would you handle a situation that was tense or uncomfortable? She gave some very good examples of how she would, she would do that. Again, she'd be learning from Kara. I'm obviously gonna be in the office to provide support where I can, just to sort of, you know, give that some work. We're kind of thinking of spending some time doing some mock scenarios, some, some payments when maybe there aren't people here just to get her started, to learn a little bit before we completely release her unattended without anyone to, to sort of shadow her. For her to shadow, I should say.
How many people applied?
We had four, five applications. Three of which had no computer experience or no other relevant experience at all. So these were the two, and then we had, one of them actually had very good experience, but she withdrew her application when I called for scheduling an interview, so.
And what, what, it says competitive salary range of twenty seven fifty to thirty one fifty, what would she be paid?
So that's really for your, you and Clint to, to hash out. She doesn't have the experience, so presumably you would be probably starting off at the lower end of that range. But that's, you know, I would hope, I want the two of you to sort of make that decision and then also make a motion to allow me to sign the letter of hire once you decide if this is who you would like.
Mm-hmm.
If this works for you, if you want me to have her come in at a later time to meet, it's just, you know, short on time, unfortunately.
Yeah, I mean, I've, um, I, I spoke with you, I, I talked to Kara. I did not hear anything from Larry, but it sounded like everybody was really impressed with her interview and, you know, was kind of unanimous who their decision was to go with, so, yeah. I mean, I, I know Quinn, I know the, the family, so, you know, I, I think that she would be a, I, I think she'd be a, a good fit for the town.
I also know Quinn. I don't know adult Quinn as well as I knew elementary school Quinn, because she was in my daughter's class in school. But I did call her, um, the reference, she provided references and I did make the calls to make sure that everything was fine, and it was. Her references confirmed that. She was a very good employee, had no problems, worked very hard. And actually, one employer said that he really misses her, because now he's having to do, do some of the work, but, yeah, so.
Yeah, I, what are your thoughts on a pay range?
Well, because she has no experience, I would say not the top amount.
No, no. I mean, I, I was, I was looking at either the twenty seven fifty or, you know, maybe as high as twenty eight.
Yeah, I was thinking twenty.
And then being able to maybe reevaluate it again for next fiscal year.
I was thinking the same thing, twenty eight.
Yeah.
Or you could start out at twenty seven fifty, have a six-month review period offer another fifty cents if things are going well with the idea that the next fiscal year would be another opportunity?
Yeah, I mean, six months is gonna put us at what, maybe April?
Gosh, is it? No, January.
Over in April or six months, so this would be.
I know, we're all like.
February, March.
February, February, yeah. January, February, February, so, totally up to you guys.
So I would suggest maybe the twenty eight and then just reviewing it for fiscal year.
I, I, I like that idea.
So it'll be a little more than six months, but, I mean, we'll be able to budget for it.
Right.
At that point, too. So it's a little bit more than obviously our low end.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
Um, I will, uh, make a motion to accept or to offer Quinn the position for the assistant, is it treasurer?
No, tax collector.
Tax collector.
Not the assistant, the actual tax collector.
Tax collector for the, uh, for the town of Buckland. And to also authorize Pam to sign any and all needed paperwork.
I second that.
Any further discussion?
Do you want the amount?
I was gonna say, do you wanna mention the pay rate in your motion?
With a pay rate of twenty eight.
Perfect.
Starting per hour. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sure we can invite Quinn to a future meeting, so you can meet her here, or we can introduce her to the public. Such that, such that it is.
Unrelated item, what is that chirping sound?
It's the air handler.
That's annoying.
It's the air handler, the air conditioning system, yeah, unfortunately.
We'll go quick.
Okay, thanks, Ben.
Uh, tree warden appointment, we have.
He's qualified to me, cuts his own firewood, yeah.
Cuts it for the town.
Roger also works for our Highway Department, so.
Yeah, I will, uh, make a motion to appoint Roger Purninton as the town of Buckland tree warden.
I second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Recreation Committee appointment. Everybody's getting appointed. We have Liz Saron, um, is looking to join the Buckland Rec Committee. Assuming she's still looking at staying on in the Assessor's office.
Yes, she is.
That would have swayed my decision. Yeah.
I'm impressed by her handwriting.
I know.
I'm getting a message from a viewer saying there's no sound on the meeting tonight. I don't know, Dana, if you're aware, but just.
I don't think he can hear you.
Yeah, I think he heard me.
Okay.
I will, uh, make a motion to appoint Liz Saron to the Rec Committee.
I second that.
That's for, is that a?
That's an annual, oh, no, I think it's, um, it's multi-year. I'll have to, Alicia will have to.
Term, but is she stepping in for somebody?
There was a vacancy.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it'll be till the end of?
So we're in, right, we'll verify that with Alicia, but it is a three, well, she's kind of coming in mid, because those appointments were July first.
So to the end of whatever the vacant term is?
Sounds good.
All right.
Yeah.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have some surplus property for disposal.
Anthony is cleaning.
So where does he get, what does he do with this stuff?
So when, once you declare it surplus, we have to list it on municipal bid.
Okay.
So hopefully we get a few dollars for things. If it's anything useful at all, a lot of the stuff, he's cleaning out the old Mayhew building to prepare it, to actually store things and make it useful. So they had a dumpster up there. I know they've been getting rid of just junk, but this, this list is what he would like to put on municipal bid.
What are, what are parking blocks?
So those are little concrete things that, for old parking spots where you pull up and it's, they're only about that tall.
Oh, okay.
Like little curb stops.
Okay. Well, obviously Anthony doesn't think we need them, so. He knows best.
That's.
Did he check with Cindy to make sure that she might not have wanted any of them at the rec?
That's, we could always throw that out to him, for sure.
Just before we get those listed, I would maybe just have reach out to, um, to her.
Yeah.
I, I could see it being something.
Cindy was watching tonight, but she says there's no sound, so she could have probably texted me.
Maybe now she hears me and she's able to, uh.
Yeah, I'll have him check with her first.
Okay. Um, there's that, there's a sixty-six inch Pelican polytub brim for their old sweeper that is no longer in use.
We, we actually, I think, got rid of that a few years ago.
Um, and the nineteen ninety-five John Deere loader with a wing and plow.
The engine is blown.
So maybe, maybe a parts, parts truck.
Yeah. Maybe.
We'll, uh, make a motion to approve the surplus list from the Highway Department. Bearing we check with, uh, the Rec Committee on those parking blocks.
Second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, we have a part-time seasonal laborer for the Highway Department. This is something that we're looking at for the winter time.
So this is sort of, I, what we're hoping you can do this evening is sort of just look this description over. Anthony and Jake put their heads together and came up with what they would like to see for a seasonal, part-time position. It would probably run from winter to help with snow removal, shoveling, clearing, you know, sidewalks into poten- early spring to help with like spring cleanup and other tasks. Basically, what we had budgeted for FY twenty-six was for two seasonal summer employees. We only had one. So we have thirteen thousand, six hundred dollars left. So we were hoping to potentially find somebody who could, you know, work through the hours a little bit if we could come up with a, a pay range. Happened to talk to Terry today in Shelburne. They're actually interviewing today for a Buildings and Grounds position in Shelburne with a pay range of twenty seventy-two to twenty-three seventy-four. And last year they paid their seasonal employee who would shovel, clear the bridge, twenty dollars and two cents to do that. So I think we were sort of thinking in that same ballpark.
Twenty dollars and two cents?
Yeah, that's what it was.
Probably how their three percent COLA felt.
Oh, okay.
Probably. So if we were to offer a pay range of like twenty-one to twenty-three, we could get up to thirty weeks of somebody to work, um, but.
Twenty hours a week.
Twenty hours?
Yeah, just on a twenty-hour, part-time. So I, I did a couple little polishing things to this, um, but they, I think they did a pretty good job of nailing down what it is they want to accomplish. So more, we would obviously work within the budget that we have now. So thoughts on that is really what I'm hoping to get some, you know, feedback, and obviously you can take time to mull it over a little bit, but we are kind of getting into that time of year when we're gonna wanna start putting it out there for somebody.
What was the months again from?
Um, so it's hard to say when, when snow is going to fly, but say probably November-ish through, say, April?
Right.
End of March, April, however we can.
Most of it's gonna be as needed basis.
It is, um, you know, the winter part for sure, we're gonna see what we have left. Because obviously if we get slammed with snowstorm after snowstorm, we could eat up that fairly quickly.
Because with those months, I see some things that are not gonna be done, they're not gonna be doing hot patching.
Right, right, but this is more if it carries over into the spring, you know, and there's still funding available. You know, Jake, this summer was tricky because we were down a member of the Highway Department. He's out on a med- a short-term medical leave. But, you know, when we get a storm, it's tr- it's tricky, especially to clear. I know last winter there were some issues just getting these sidewalks in front of the Town Hall cleared, the bridge. You know, I mean, Jake's just one person trying to do a lot of clearing. And I had actually asked Terry as well. I guess Shelburne does have a bylaw that requires their residents to clear their sidewalks. You know, we don't, so that's why we sort of are in this position of.
That's pretty common.
It is, it is, so, something to think about, I guess, for the future. But anyway, that's the story with that.
No, I mean, I, I read through the, the job description. It looks like they pretty much covered everything, so, I mean, I, I'm okay with it. Do we need to, because I mean, this is something that they can just use moving forward anyways, for summer, summer help.
Yeah.
So they, they pretty much got everything in here.
What they're describing here is not, you'd wanna.
Pretty much all the same duties as either, um, working for the Highway Department or working for.
Yeah. For Jake and the.
For Jake.
Yeah.
And who would supervise this person?
So currently, I think Jake was overseeing the summer position. Um, I think he and Anthony sort of in tandem would potentially be doing that, but again, that would be probably at your discretion to say who is the supervisor. We don't have a highway superintendent at this point. He's a foreman, so I'm not sure.
It would fall to the foreman, because he's technically the one in charge, so.
Yeah.
I like this criterion, must have the ability to listen and follow instructions.
Yeah, I thought they did a very thorough job of putting this together, so.
Yep, um, you know, does that actually need any motion from us?
Um, I guess more just, you know, I don't know if it needs a motion per se, just to sort of say that, you know, we can move forward with posting the position, um, once we iron out the, you know, as long as we're using the available budget. Do you have a sense of where you feel the pay should land for this position? It was in my, just doing the, the math.
I mean, I think if that's, if that's gonna be workable.
Using the twenty-one to twenty-three range, okay, okay.
Yep, I mean, I, I think it's, not sure what the, where the summer help was.
Yeah, I'll have to look at that, obviously, well.
But yeah, no, I think if that'll work, then.
Okay.
Can, uh, move forward with it.
Okay, sounds good.
So no vote on that?
No, I don't think we need to, because that's all falling inside of the budget already anyways. No appointments tonight. Moving right along, we've got, uh, a MOU for Mass in Motion for the fiscal year twenty-six. That is the same MOU, uh, nothing has changed in it from our last time that we signed this. So I will make a motion to, um, sign the, uh, MOU with the FERCOG or their Mass in Motion.
All right, I second that.
Is that just, is that both signatures or just?
Um, I believe it was just.
Just a chair.
A chair.
Motion that the Chair signed the MOU for the FERCOG and Mass in Motion.
All right, second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we have a Apex Change Order number two for the Buckland landfill.
So this was something that Heather had sort of had the ball rolling before she left, but it didn't come in until after she was gone, so she does not know, or she did not know in advance the cost associated with it. Looking at our budget, this is gonna put us over by about three thousand dollars, um, because evidently we're now required to monitor PFAS at the, at the former landfill site. And reading through this, it also looks like we are responsible for providing an escort, if needed, to any of the monitoring wells that are on property other than the town. I know in the past, one of the monitoring wells, the owner was not cooperative about allowing access to do the testing. So I noticed within this, it does, um, it does discuss that there potentially would be escort cost. Well, like, they're not gonna charge us escort costs, but we may incur that if we have to have hire a police detail, for example.
So these are wells that are close to the old landfill?
Yes, yeah.
That are on people's property?
One of them is on, on private property, yes.
And what about the rest of them? Is that the only one?
Um, I believe one is probably on Fire District property. There's another one, actually, it is on private property, but the people, those individuals have been cooperative as far as my understanding. So, yeah, and this is just for a year, so assuming this is something that's gonna have to happen.
This is an every year?
It looked like it when I read through. It looked like an annual requirement. So I have made a note for the budget to add this when we start planning for next year. Um, and then as far as the cost for this year, we'll probably have to just keep a tab on that and see if it's something where we're gonna need to do a, an end, you know, end of year transfer or what the best, best, um, idea for that is.
So in terms of a person that was uncooperative to have the well tested, what right do we have to do that?
So it's not their water wellness, it's a monitoring well that the D, GPAC or DEP, I assume DEP or EPA, I'm not really sure who installed that. I'm not sure how.
When they capped, when they capped the landfill, they put in all those pipes, those are all monitoring wells, is what they are. So they're, that's where they, they pull their testing from, but they bring everything downstream, too, so coming downhill from that.
And I do believe they, they do collect water samples, um, potentially from their private water as well, just to make sure there's nothing leaching and seeping, like Clint said. But it is, there are monitoring wells, you'll see them listed on the last page, page four. Um, I guess they do three, six monitoring wells, two surface water sampling locations, and then the water supply well is located on private property on Asheville Road, um, at the Smith residence, so.
This is because all these chemicals started coming into our products that people.
Forever chemicals.
Forever chemicals.
So we're not, I mean, there's not much we can say. Um, I think we're kind of bound to do this, but it is going to come at an additional cost.
It would be interesting to say, what if we told them no?
We'd probably get fined, I would assume, um, which would probably be more expensive than the sixty-eight hundred dollars.
I'm just curious, is it, what level do they say it's, or they're monitoring it, but what, how can they solve the problem if it gets?
I don't know, is it's a problem that they will solve necessarily? I don't know. That's a good question I could certainly ask.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious. I mean, it's not like anyone's adding anything to it now.
Right, right.
Nice, because Masti, he likes to add stuff every year and it sends up the prices, so.
When, when, do you know when the landfill was closed?
Oh, God.
Maybe in the sixties?
No.
Seventies?
No, no, I.
Maybe twenty-five years ago.
Yeah, not that long ago.
Maybe thirty years ago.
We had, we were using that as a dump when I was in high school, anyway, granted I'm getting old.
Thirty years ago.
Yes, yes, thank you Clint for that, yep.
Yeah. All right, I'll, uh, make a motion to approve the Change Order number two for, um, Apex for the Buckland landfill.
I second that.
Further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a letter of support for the next stop of the Northern Tier Passenger Rail Project.
So this was a request, um, by Beth Giannini at FERCOG. They are applying, um, they're basically looking for a flood of letters to come in to support this next phase for the, um, you know, this northern tier corridor of the rail. Is it east-west or west-east or whatever, the, the rail, the expanded ability to get to Boston, for example, from here.
That'd be fun, like, but it used to, we used to be able to do that.
Yep, yep. So it would allow for, you know, a, a new corridor, a new opportunity for those of us in the more rural areas to travel.
So they're actually extending it?
Correct.
So to Pittsburgh, is it?
Um, I feel like it's already to Pittsburgh.
Okay, so what would?
So it's gonna be west of Pittsburgh.
There's a train leaving Westminster, it says, yeah. Well, I don't like the idea of.
Make a motion to, uh, sign the, have the Chair sign the letter of support for the next stop of the Northern Tier Passenger Rail Project.
I second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have a agreement, uh, in between the Franklin County Sheriff's Office for Regional Dog Shelter Services and the Regional Animal Control Services. So nothing on either of these, um, agreements have changed.
No, they matched what we had, um, well, the budget included the funds to pay for the, um, Animal Control Services. I don't see where the three hundred and fifty dollars was budgeted for the dog shelter, but we'll find that somewhere. But the other, it did match up, and I believe it's gonna be next year.
That, that was our yearly contribution for that, anyway.
Right, but I don't see it in the, in the budget, um, this year, so. I'm gonna talk to Mike when he's back and see if it's hidden somewhere that I'm just not finding it.
Yeah, I can't remember where we.
It, it's not under, there's an actual line for Animal Control Services and it just includes the, you know, this amount.
Right.
The three hundred and fifties, I thought maybe it was under like the Animal Inspector and that section of the budget. But I don't see it. So it could be a case where it maybe just didn't carry over from somewhere.
Right.
I'll talk to Mike and get that figured out. I do believe that next year you're gonna see a much, a different arrangement, a different request for funding. Um, I do believe that next year, you're gonna see a much, a different arrangement, a different request for funding. I think this was the last year of the.
Correct.
The, um, was it like a three-year?
Yeah, cuz they tried, well, they tried to dump it last year.
Yep, yep.
We were in a three-year contract.
Right, right. So next year we'll.
We respectfully declined at that point in time.
Yep, so.
But I think it was going up to.
It was a.
It was going up quite a bit.
I was gonna say, it was a pretty substantial amount, as I recall.
I think we're going from three fifty to, I wanna say it was like nine hundred or a thousand.
Yeah, I can't, I'm not sure, but it was going up.
Yeah.
But we're not in a position to have an animal shelter.
No, no.
And I think it's great that we have Furcog handling.
The Sheriff's Office.
Oh, it's the Sheriff's Office.
Their cost hasn't, haven't gone up in fifteen years?
Yeah, no.
I think, since they, I, I actually think since they opened. So it's probably been fifteen, twenty years, so.
I'm sure it's the same here, but I can recall when I lived in Worthington or, you know, it was, you had a local person handling these things. Could be tricky.
We did up until a few years ago, actually, so.
Takes, takes, you know, it's very personal.
Yeah, that definitely adds a professional element.
I will uh make a motion to allow the Town Administrator to sign the agreement um for the Franklin County Sheriff's Office for Regional Dog Shelter Services and the Regional Animal Control Services.
You want me to sign it? Okay, got it.
I second that.
Uh, any further discussion? Or none? All in favor?
Aye.
That way there, if anything else comes through, then.
Okay, got it.
Have the blessing.
Okay. Um, for the minutes, the July twenty-second, I've sort of tabled for the next time because Larry, it was only Larry and Joan. So with Larry not here, he can't vote on the minutes tonight.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah.
Okay. Well, I will uh make a motion to accept the minutes for the July thirty-first meeting.
I second that.
Because Mary did a fantastic job as always, so I don't wanna let her go unacknowledged tonight.
I always enjoy reading them.
Uh, any further discussion? Or none? All in favor? Aye.
Clint was not here on the twenty-second?
It, I looked at who he would, how he would have them sign it, and he only had signatories for Larry and Joan.
Who did? I just recently did those minutes. Do you think I can really? I was just thinking of who did I have that was in attendance?
June, I wasn't here.
Okay.
Pretty sure I was here.
Well, I guess we need to add a signature line for Clint then, but I didn't bring them upstairs because I saw that you hadn't included three lines for them, so.
I wonder if, sometimes when you move something backwards, it gets rid of a line?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No worries, we can add it on to the next one.
No, so I was here the twenty-second.
I have him here on the twenty-second.
The thirty-first, I would not have, no, cuz we met in the morning on the thirty-first, so I was.
But the, the copy that I printed only had uh lines for two of them.
It was the previous month that.
Yes, it was June that I wasn't here. I was here on the twenty-second.
It's just that, one of the.
I have his name and his signature line on both copies.
That's so weird, cuz when I printed him out, it wasn't.
Yeah.
So, I have no idea what happened. Okay, so we will acknowledge that Clint was here and we'll put, it's in the folder for the next meeting, so we will catch it then. And I will figure out why I don't have the right signature page between now and then.
Ah.
Yeah, I don't know.
Um, we have our vendor and payroll warrants, uh, twenty-six oh three, twenty-six oh four for our vendor and three and four for our payroll. We'll make a motion to approve both.
I second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Items not reasonably anticipated by Chair, um, I have nothing. Select Board Member Concerns?
Well, I have, I have a question though. Why is one sidewalk on the bridge not open? What, what's wrong? Is that our side or is that Shelburne's side?
I don't know, is it?
It's the, on the, the sidewalk on the Iron Bridge?
Iron Bridge, yes.
It is the Shelburne end, um, down on the end where they did the repairs, apparently the repairs were not.
Something was not copacetic. I'm not sure, they could not, I've called and spoken with them and Francis.
They just said it didn't, the walkway portion did not pass the inspection, so.
Yeah, and I'm not sure what the plan is to fix it or, I've not heard.
And I have to say, the people painting the hydrants, what a great job.
Oh, I hadn't noticed.
That would be the uh Water Department.
Yeah, it was just, it was a, it was a great job.
Nice, um, yeah.
Town Administrator Report.
Okay, so because we only met once, I do have, I have some things. Hopefully we'll get through it fairly, fairly uneventfully. Um, the first thing, the recycling fees, they have been increasing monthly. Um, August, the market's dropped another five dollars and sixty-five cents. The processing fee is now seventy-nine dollars and eighty-five cents a ton. So we're not seeing the offset we once saw where we were, you know, the, the market.
Right.
For recyclables offsetting the cost to actually process. Um, so our bills are quite a bit more than I think we anticipated. Um, Jan Amin did send an email because she sat in on a meeting with Waste Management just to learn more about what market conditions are affecting this, this slump in pricing. So there's a few issues. Um, companies in New England recycling plants all increase capacity by adding robotic or AI sorting tools. This increased capacity to three hundred thousand tons a year, which will, which creates more supply than previous and creates an imbalance in the supply and demand equation. Um, infrastructure for recycling mills and manufacturers is not increasing to meet supply. Um, tariffs, the um US tariffs of forty percent on the new PET plastic or the virgin plastic, which is used for like water bottles and soda bottles, um, is not going to China anymore. It's staying in the US, and because there's the additional raw material, it's cheaper to go with the new plastic, the new PET than the recycled PET. Um, so this makes a lower value for the recycled goods. Um, paper mills are closing down, old and inefficient mills, and they haven't started building any new mills or replacing that capacity. So again, there's an oversupply of, of paper. So all of those factors together leads to much higher costs for us to get rid of, process our recycling. Um, I mean, the, the other waste doesn't seem to be going down in price either, but the recycling definitely is, is not where it was, you know, pre-COVID even. So we'll continue to keep an eye on that, again, as we're starting to think about budgeting for next year. Um, I, I plan to figure out exactly where we're at with our decal sales and our trash ticker sales, so that can give you a sense of our additional revenue we've received from that, how that's looking to offset future costs. So at least we do have that or something. Um, so that was, that's the bad news. Couple good news items. Um, I did get a call from the, from Jessica Atwood, or actually an email from Jessica Atwood at the Furcog back in March, um, I guess, March of twenty-four. The Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs updated its Open Space and Rec Planner's Workbook to include a ten-year action plan and allow an open space and rec plan to be approved for ten years, since seven in the past. They're now reaching out to let us know that the EEA um is allowing select communities, Buckland being one, to alter our plan to extend it three more years. Um, I asked her, you know, what's the catch? She said, as far as she can see, there isn't one. Um, that's gonna just allow us to be eligible for like the park grant, three additional years, to also have three additional years to, to accomplish some of those tasks um that we had put forth in our action plan. So, we have to apply by September thirtieth, provided that neither of you see a problem with that. I will go ahead and let her know, but I think it seems like a good idea to do that. Um, and that will allow us more time because we need to get our own, you know, we were creeping up on the time that our own, you know, our plan would be coming to.
What particular projects were you thinking of?
Well, the, the current open space plan lists kind of some action items. So one thing we've talked about is Cricket Field.
Right, I was, that's what I was thinking, yes.
So, yeah, it's gonna give us just a little more time, which seemed like a good idea to me. Um, so, that was good news, now some bad news. Can have you guys on a roller coaster. I have more good news coming, but now some bad news.
She's trying to trick us.
We were notified that we did not receive the MVP grant that Heather had filed before she left. Um, it was a, an action grant, municipal vulnerability, um, preparedness action grant. Um, they're anticipating another round of grants in the spring of twenty-twenty-six. I did reach out to our contacts at GZA just to see if there's anything we can do, if there's any suggestions for other grants that may be out there, so that we keep this momentum going. This was for the Clessenbrook Watershed Resilience Project. This is the, you know, stabilizing that stream bank by the rec. There was some, a project up by the Willis Farm, you know, areas where we've identified that floods are going to be detrimental. Um, I will continue work, to work with Allison Cornish um, if we can potentially pursue other opportunities while we're waiting for the next round of grants to open. So that was a bit of a bummer to find out.
Did they say why, David?
They didn't, they said it was an incredibly competitive round of grants, so that's MVP. Um, okay, now some, you know, moving along. Natalie Blay reached out to let us know that after years of advocacy, and you may have already heard this, um, but the advocacy to advance legislation to address the broken formula for calculating state-owned land pilots, the governor has announced that she's convening a special commission focused on state-owned land pilot reform. This will hopefully be a big step towards a fair formula for our rural, rural communities who steward the Commonwealth's Forest Farms and Watersheds. So that's, you know, the payment in lieu of taxes, the pilots that we get for certain state-owned land. It's, you know, it's been a little unfair.
How much land do?
So currently Buckland only ha- so funny enough, in my other assessing world, I'm still working with, um, we just found out of another, two parcels of land that were sold to the Fish and Game, um, Division of the Massachusetts Fish and Game. So we're adding two more. I just filled out the paperwork today, so they'll get added to our roster. Hopefully we will have that, so we don't, it doesn't completely go exempt. We had two other parcels currently, um, the State Forest, and there's another, off of Bray Road, there's another piece of state-owned land. So not all state-owned land is exempt, I found out today. Um, there's certain criteria to that. So, um, but there are, like Holly, for example, has a tremendous amount of state-owned land and, and they're not receiving, you know, it's, it's not quite equitable from what the eastern part of the state is receiving to the western.
I think Shell, they're all too.
A lot of the rural western Mass, so, anyway, so she's, so that is hopefully a big step forward.
Okay.
Um, we received our CDBG monitoring report, no findings of non-compliance. Um, they basically look at the financial operations of the grant and everything looked good. So that was good news. More good news. Mohawk's District Treasurer Bing Waldsmith reached out to me. Um, she was very gracious and offered to assist us in trying to find transportation for that Smith-Vogue student that we did not know about or budget for. Um, so she was able to find a seat on the bus in working with the bus company, and we will be paying seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and nine cents um for transporting the student. And I'm just very appreciative to Bing because, you know, it was a real, it was a real, oh my gosh, moment when we found out about this student and, um, you know, so this is something we will need to plan on for the special town meeting, for the tuition and for the transportation for the student. But I'm, I mean, Bing was amazing in, in helping us get to this point, so.
That's great.
Yes, um, the Buckland Historic Commission, um, they're still working through their process of accepting that grant that they were awarded. Um, the State's Historic Commission requires that the town commit to the full twenty-five thousand dollars for the project. I explained to David Perella that we did not, we do not have an additional twelve thousand five hundred, and if we were to try to do that, it would require a special town meeting to appropriate that money from somewhere. He very much said, I don't wanna go that route, so he reached back out to the state. They're allowing him, I believe, six weeks to fundraise the twelve thousand five hundred, and if he's not successful, he's going to decline the grant. So TBD on that. Um, Natalie, speaking of her earlier, she is gonna start holding office hours here again at the Town Hall. She did that pre-COVID, and she's interested in her staff, sometimes her, um, being here the second Monday of each month from nine-thirty to eleven. I imagine that's not an issue with anyone here, it'd be great. Um, we've had Paul Marks, you know, aides here, um, also monthly, which has been nice. I think a lot of people have taken advantage of that, um, since we do have, you know, handicapped accessibility and everything up here, so.
Right, I think the, um, and we're sort of centrally located for her district, but.
Yep.
Um, I know she was just doing in Greenfield and in another community or something like that, or we're stuck with David.
So, second Monday, um, nine-thirty to eleven. October will be a little different cuz there's the holiday, so she'll be here the twentieth, twentieth that month. Um, those booklets that I put in your folders from the Woodlands Partnership, I, they just sort of arrived. I've glanced at them quickly. It looks like it talks a lot about emergency services and the impact of tourism on them. It talked a little bit about the pilot stuff we were just talking about. Um, I'm not really sure what the, what created this, you know, who asked to have that ser- that study done or who dropped them off even, they just appeared. Um, so that's what I've got. Uh, the only other thing is, um, next, in October, not September, I'm wondering about moving the October fourteenth meeting to October seventh. Now, the fourteenth is the day after Columbus Day, and because of the second and fourth meeting schedule, typically it will follow along with the warrant, and then it starts not following along with the warrant. So moving it back to the seventh would actually follow, fall in line with the warrant, and it would allow me to maybe go on a vacation. So, thoughts? Just because, um, you know, it's tricky if it's a warrant week and then a select board week the following week. There's never a time that I could kind of squeeze that in.
So then there would be a couple more weeks then to the second one, right?
So it'd end up being October seventh.
Are you looking the seventh and twenty-first, or are you looking?
Hmm, let's see. It would be the seventh and the twenty-eighth, so you, you would kind of. I mean, it could be the seventh and the twenty-first, if you wanted to change both meetings, but if you just wanted to reschedule the one that was typically scheduled for the fourteenth, um.
I'm flexible, whatever.
I'm, I'm okay with the seventh.
Okay, alright, and then I would look to, uh, put in a time off request but be gone the ninth of October. Not sure exactly when I'd be back, but.
Which state are we hitting this time?
Hitting a few, Kentucky being one of them to visit my aunt who I've not seen for many years, so, yes. So, that'll be great if you guys are willing to do that.
That's fine.
Seventh AM twenty-eighth.
Yep. And that's all I've got.
I'm okay with that. Alright, um, any public comment? Or none? Uh, announcements in upcoming meetings, uh, September ninth, we have, will be our next select board meeting. And it looks like the twenty-third of September, and then October seventh. Any other announcements or anything that?
Um, I know that the Council on Aging is hosting an event September fourth at the Buckland Rec area. Um, I know they're having music at that event, and I believe you have to pre-register?
Call the senior center.
At the senior center, so, um, that would be. Very fun, sounds like, so.
Alright. Uh, nothing else, I will move to adjourn.
I have to second that?
All in favor? Alright, uh, thank you and good evening.